Yeah, this came up, I mean, several people have reached out to Melissa, concerned about the public art portion of this, and we've had multiple discussions about that. I don't know if that's come up in conversation at all.
Just today Melissa told me about it.
Yeah. More so from the sculpture tour, being concerned about what this language says. And I've looked at it multiple times, and I actually think that there's no concern. I think this does a very good job. The entire thing, I think, is extremely well done, and I was amazed at the level of detail that it goes into, you know, the different façades and infrastructure and all that. But the public art piece, I think they're concerned that this is setting forth guidelines for all art, and that's not the case. When this is, I think, we need to be clear that they all understand, and it doesn't really need to be further clarity, because I think it's in here, but this is about pieces that are purchased or commissioned by the public, right, and using public dollars. And it's simply setting forth guidelines, saying, you know, because of the public input and because of spending public dollars, it ought to be following this guidance. The other thing I think it does a very good job of is helping to just set forth things that need to be looked at regarding who owns these pieces. The sculpture tour purchased the piece, and we've got insurance on it, right? So who owns it? And who's going to maintain it? What happens, what expense is that going to go to? And so I think this is a very good job of outlining pieces that become a permanent part of the collection, a permanent part of the downtown, outside of, after the sculpture tour. But the concern was, is this putting restrictions on what is allowed to be in the sculpture tour?
I didn't read it.
No, and I think that's very, we just, I think if people come with those questions, I think it needs to be very clear that, no, this is about
Clarification.
Pieces that we would commission as a city, or that would be perhaps donated to the city, or that we're going to spend public dollars on. It's setting forth guidance, and it's also saying, you know, the community has identified that they'd like to see similar, like, if we were to commission a piece, where would they want that put? So the more I looked at it, I think it gives good credence to the sculpture tour, I think the whole thing is based on the success of that. I mean, it gives, it's clear, that's how this thing was written. So if those come up, I just, the more I looked at it, there's no need to...
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't read it that way either. I mean, I think it's talking about specifically pieces of art that the city actually acquires in whatever way, donated or purchased.
I think we have three right now. I think. The one over here that was bought by the anonymous person donated that to the city, so it's the city's piece.
Right. But I think this gives some guidance. We didn't know how to deal with that, right?
Okay.
What do we do? And is it acceptable? Well, this provides some guidance. You know, the general consensus for the public, as they've gone through this, says that this is the style they would like. Okay.
Okay. The other comment?
The only other thing that I'll say, and it has nothing to do with the resolution itself, is that Christie did email me and indicated that in order for the downtown plan to be incorporated into the comprehensive plan, which would then update your plan, is you do need to go through the amendment process, and that involves starting with the plan commission, and then it ultimately comes to council for approval by including it in the comprehensive plan. And then that effectively constitutes an update of your plan, and that's important for grants, because they want you to have an updated plan within the last five years.
And this is our fifth year. We adopted the old plan in 2010, so it is time to update it, so.
Yeah.
And you're saying we can do that at a later date?
Yes.
Just amend the comprehensive plan to include the
You go through the process.
revitalization plan.
Right, to incorporate that into the plan. Now, the, the driving force behind getting this done tonight is because Kevin needs this resolution in order to include in the application that he's going to submit for his tax credit.
So your resolution is not, it's not about the comprehensive plan?
No.
Okay.
No.
The resolution is just as, is about the downtown
About the downtown revitalization plan. And it anticipates the project that Kevin is proposing, so.
And what if in the housing portion of it?
All right, we're going to get into the housing here in a minute, but I think the resolution is separate from what Kevin's housing part.
Okay.
So I would recommend that we pass the resolution first, or deny it, either way, and then we go in, and Kevin has some information he wants to share with us.
Okay.
Yep, so I entertain a motion to introduce Resolution 2015-18.
So move.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Resolution 2015-18, short title, "Resolution of the Economic Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, Which Approves the Decatur Downtown Revitalization Plan." Ran out of breath.
Now we need a motion to approve it. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Okay, and there should be at least four copies
Yeah, so it's, I think you
To sign.
Five, we're doing that.
Yeah, make sure you sign in the aye column, if you voted in favor, not the nay column.
Yeah, I'll cut.
Don't look at me, will you?
Okay, next item I have is Kevin's going to explain a little bit about that downtown housing program, and what our partnership as a city is with Kevin. We've had some discussions over this last week with Kevin concerning what our partnership is. I got to pull up Kevin. There you go.
Check.
Button for a couple seconds, and it should be on.
Check.
There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin Biggs, sole member of Biggs TC Development, the developer coming forward, to request for the city's support for the housing project that is proposed, and is a key element to the part of the plan that was just adopted here tonight. And as I've had some discussions with you, Mayor, and Kim, I'll share with the rest, for this kind of keystone project to happen as part of this plan, it's a very competitive process at the state. We are trying with all of our efforts to put in a score as high as possible, so that it'll have the utmost consideration at the state level. Unlike Stella, which is very, very subjective, and we all worked very, very hard on our Stella application, the housing component is completely objective, meaning that there is a very specific scoring criteria laid out, what's called the Qualified Allocation Plan through IHCDNA. I think it totals 195 points. It's, the feeling of, of the development community that this year, the scores between probably 140 and 150 are going to win an award of tax credits for a housing project. So we feel pretty confident about the, the plan that we're putting forth with the buildings downtown and adding in some other, at least purchased homes to bolster this application. But one key component, the reason why I'm here tonight, is because there are three points that can be achieved through outside donation contributions made to the project. Could be from various sources. I've had discussions with the mayor here over the past six or eight months about how we can kind of collaborate together to make sure that this project gets done. One area of focus was, and it still is, the Schaefer Building, which we are proposing to demolish that building to make way for green space and parking as part of this plan. Now, the city was unsuccessful at gaining site control by the seller, because the city had secured several appraisals, and the average of those two appraisals of what the city could pay for the property, that fell quite a bit short of where the seller was willing to pay. So I negotiated a price higher than that. The price that I negotiated was 187.5, which I feel is too much to pay for that property, but it's what it is, and it's what we needed to do to make sure that we were able to get site control on that property. Now, it will be part of our development, along with the acquisition of what we call the Music House and the Fifth Third Building and all the other property to come together for this development. But in discussions, the mayor had said they'd received a quote about having that building torn down of about $125,000, and also then about $75,000 to get that site prepared for redevelopment. So in the tune of about $200,000 that the city was willing to invest in that property, in addition to what the acquisition would be, of about $110,000. So what I'm coming before you today is to ask you for a contribution that would allow us to score, I feel, I can't get to the full number to get my full three points that's available, but I feel we can get to two and a half points, and it's on a graduated scale, spelled out in the QAP. It's a percentage of the total development cost. If, if we can achieve 5%, then we can receive the full three points, but we're going for 4%, which will give us two and a half points to score on this project. So what I'd like to present to you is, let me go ahead and get these in your hands, and I've got a little supporting documentation to follow up with, but I've got some numbers for you to follow along with me. No, if you could go ahead and pass those around, Jer. Should have kept them for myself.
I'll make more copies if you want, Kevin.
Oh, I've got, I've got plenty here. I think I got 12, so. Let's go ahead and let that circulate, and I'll walk you through what we're formally requesting from the city. The figure that I feel is reasonable to get the two and a half points is a total sum of $239,000. And if we can have documentation from the city of a contribution at that level, that will give us sufficient information that we can submit for our application to achieve the highest score that feels reasonable. Now, keep in mind, again, that the, the acquisition, the site control on the Schaefer Building, we are essentially, the calculation I showed there, the Schaefer Building at 187.5, where we have the purchase agreement, and, and as Tim has shared with me, the allowable purchase price by the city will only come to 110,000. So off the bat, to help make this redevelopment happen downtown, our development is paying 77.5, kind of in addition to what the city could have got this done for. So I just want you to keep that in mind. That's, that's what I'm calling an intangible value that we are adding here to the city of Fort Wayne to help get that building raised and turn back into productive space. The way that I'm asking, the way I'm justifying this donation of $239,000, top of the page, would be that, again, the estimate that's been received for the demolition of the building of 125,000, we would then use those funds to, in fact, demolish the building. $75,000, again, for the, the estimate on the backfill and getting the site prepared, we would obviously use those funds for the same. We're also asking for two $15,000 facade grants, in the amount of $30,000, which would help offset our development costs for improving the facades in these buildings. And then unrelated to the two buildings downtown, but still part of our development, are, we're building some newly constructed homes out of East Ridge, also part of the artist's entrepreneurial effort. There's 12 lots in East Ridge that will be built in single-family homes, and so we're asking that those tap, sewer and tap fees be donated, and those are 500 each for the water taps and 250 for the sewer.
And that, and that, excuse me, that's part of it because it's just all part of the grant together?
It's, it's all part of the application that we are submitting, part of the housing project. So the housing project is essentially comprised of 12, 13, 15, 16 parcels total. There's the two buildings downtown, there's the Schaefer Building, that's three. There's 12 lots out of East Ridge that will be single-family homes built on. Those will actually be treated as lease purchase, so they will not be long-term rentals after the, the 15-year compliance period. The individuals in the homes actually have the ability and the option to purchase those homes. So it cultivates homeownership in the long run in that residential neighborhood. And then there's one other parcel that we're adding in over on Elm Street. It's a little home that, at 720 Elm Street, suffered a fire about four years ago, and it's been vacant ever since. And the agency incentivized developers to help redevelop blighted properties such as that, and we received some additional points for bringing a property like that into the fold as well. That home will also be treated the same manner as East Ridge as lease purchase.
Okay.
So, so these are all part of our application that's going to the state here next week, Monday. So, so what I would like to propose as tangible value back to the city in return for this donation would be, first, next item down, the Music House. The appraised value on the Music House is $95,000. I have site control and an option to purchase on that property at $95,000. In the, in the first floor, to the front, storefront, there is approximately 2,352 square feet that is depicted on this sheet here. And I apologize, I don't think I have enough to go around for everyone to see, but if you could share a couple of these. This is the first floor of what we call the Music House. The area highlighted is the area that will be developed as a co-working space as well as the art center. And these are the spaces that we've been working with the city, that we have a commitment that the city would essentially own and operate, and we would help manage as part of, not necessarily as part of our housing project, but this is part of the overall concept of what's talked about in the, the plan that's approved tonight. What I would like to propose is that we acquire that Music House property, and then we deed to the city for a dollar and condominium off that space, which was part of the plan all along, to condominium that off, but instead of selling that portion to the city, we'll deed that over to a dollar to the city. So essentially, we are gifting back to the city. And I've quantified that, that transfer simply by taking the overall $95,000 purchase price, total square footage with a pro rata amount of the square footage that is being deeded back over. So that's quantified a little over $9,000, as you see on the sheet. The Schaefer Building, my next exhibit here, I'll share with you. What I'm handing out now is what we propose to redevelop when this building is torn down. Essentially, the total green space, border-to-border of this site that you're looking at is the Schaefer site, where that building will be torn down. So as you can see, we're proposing to redevelop this space into 40, a total of 47 parking spots, 45 standard 288 parking spots, plus some green space where we will have a little pavilion situated. The green space and, I'm trying to think of how many parking spaces, I need 28, I need 28 for the development, plus I think I was planning on another maybe half a dozen that we would have as, as some visitor parking for the development. Would stay with the development. I'm proposing to, to turn back over to the city 15 parking spots, which is what I'm highlighting, what I have highlighted there in yellow. A little bit to be determined exactly how we will carve this parcel up, but I'm estimating that about 30% of this site would make up those 30 parking spots. So similar to what I proposed on the Music House and the space that we would be deeding back to a dollar, we are proposing to acquire the site, demolish the building with the funds that the city would donate to the development team. We would then redevelop the site with parking and green space, and once that development is complete, we would then survey off the appropriate 15 parking spots and related sidewalk easement, that corner, essentially what I've shown, and that would be then deeded back to the city, again, for a dollar. So I show that as a tangible value on my sheet, starting with quantifying the, the underlying asset of, of the property. So I'm paying 187.5 for the property. If I take 30% of that acquisition price, about 30% of the property, I come up with $56,200. I've also quantified the actual developed parking spaces, which I'm quantifying at $5,000 per parking space. So with 15 parking spots at $5,000, a piece at $75,000. So at the bottom, you'll see that we're requesting a donation of $239,000 from the city. What we are providing as tangible benefit back would be the $9,000 by donating the space from the Music House back to the city. Then the, the two components of the property where the Schaefer Building currently exists, the $56,200, which would be the pro rata of, of the acquisition price, where that's the land value, plus the development costs, or the finished development of 15 parking spaces in that, that land of $75,000. So essentially, just by doing the math, the net contribution then, in my eyes, that I feel I'm asking for, would be the $98,000. And then if you also add in the intangible contribution that we are making to secure that building and get it torn down, you know, there's another $77,500 above what the city would have been able to pay for that price. I feel it's also intangible that the city is benefiting from as well. So questions on my exhibits, or my math, or?
So in this scenario, we don't have to buy it from you?
Correct.
We pay for it, don't be torn down.
In fact, I think Kevin needs to keep ownership in order to qualify for the
Yeah, that's what, initially, my understanding was that Kevin was going to acquire it if he was awarded the, the project, and we were going to buy it from Kevin at the price we could pay. We would raise it, we would backfill it, we would site prepare it, and then we would work out an arrangement with Kevin to provide him with the parking spaces, but we would ultimately own the property. What Kevin indicated is that he is required to keep site control, and that's the only question that I had, Kevin, is you're deeding back a part of this, so how does that work? If you're required to keep site control, how do you do that? Or is that, are you not, are you only required to keep site control of the areas that you actually have to use in relation to the housing?
Well, it comes back to the ability to capture these points that I'm talking about, and from the agency's eyes, they're going to say, well, we can't give you points on a property that is not part of your development. So that's why we're proposing that we keep that space that's related to our, our parking needs and the green space needs for the property as part of the development. Now, what I'm completely open to considering, if, if this is a desire of the property to ultimately control that, is we can simply have an agreement that after we get through what's called the extended use period, which is 30 years, there's a 15-year compliance period, and then the agency requires another 15-year extended use agreement, that the property be turned over to the city. And then there's, and then essentially, the, the housing development could lease that back, so that ultimately, long-term, the city of Decatur then owns that parking and that green space.
Tyler, how old are you? You're only going to be around here in 45 years.
Is, is the green space, is that desire to require? Do you get points for that?
We do. There are components of that green space. There's, actually, if you look on the site there, we're putting in a rather elaborate water detention facility underground, the pavilion that's shown on there. These are all components that help us achieve a score and get points, so.
Two questions I have. Is the 187,000, are you convinced that's as good a price as it gets on that property?
That is, after about
To me, it's not more than 80,000, let alone 180,000.
That was after about a month and a half of negotiation with the seller's broker in Fort Wayne at BND. We started here, and we came together at 187,000.
Second question, this sounds great. What if you build it and they don't come? What happens to it if it's not leased out to the artist's preferred housing?
You mean, if, if there simply isn't residence? You mean, if it doesn't get rented out at all?
Right.
Well, yeah, as a developer, then I've got big challenges to deal with, because I'm on guarantees to make sure that these housing credits don't get recaptured. So
But give, give me, I guess, an idea of a rent, and a subsidized rent.
Yeah, subsidized rent, I could have brought a chart with me, Matt, but I, these are well-published rents. Kim, I think you might even know better than I do.
I asked this question, I asked this to the city this, so. It's all based on the percentage of area median income, right? So to be a little moderate, it's 60% AMI or below. And then they divvy it up, and it's like 25% each category, but 30% AMI, 4% AMI, 30% AMI, 6% AMI. Go towards IHCDNA, which is they say, here's what, you know, the rent you have is. So it's possible that if you're 30% AMI, you could get a one-room bedroom space for $331. If you are 60% AMI, that's $635. So
For one bedroom?
For one bed, one bedroom. On average, right, it takes it to $535, or $500 on average for that, that group. So, I mean
I wonder what they're paying now, people that have a fuckin' stuff there. You know, I'm sure it's not $500 a lot.
And 30% AMI, you would have to be not making much. I mean, 60% AMI is, for a single person, is 12 to 40 an hour, on a 40-hour job. That's very reasonable. If you're, if you're married and had children, it's up to $18 an hour. That's 60% AMI. But your question about, I just, I was asking questions, and I don't think I shared this with you. I called the Hawks in Goshen. They have been open for less than a year. Within six weeks, they had all 35 units rented by artists. The vast majority of them were from Goshen. Now, Goshen's three times the size of VR, but they were all from within Goshen. Because I was, my question was, how did you advertise to get the people? And he's like
We didn't have to, did we?
We did, we did, you know, events beforehand, but they did have some people, I mean, so I, feeling it, I don't
Well, the people living there, I mean, is there a requirement, not only financially, but do they have to actually have
Splays?
Yeah, do they have to work within the
Sure.
That's all confined?
So we are going to have a tenant selection plan laid out. The one thing that we can do that is rather unique is that artists are the only population that Section 42 of the IRS Code allows a management company, a developer, to give preference to. That's it, artists. And that's why we're capitalized on it.
That's what we're going to do.
Yeah. And it's been done
For years and years and years now. Now, define artists.
That's a great question. We're going to have a very broad definition of an artist. Is it a culinary artist? Is it a graphic artist? Is it a
Bench jeweler?
Sculpturer? Is it a jeweler? Is it, you know, we feel that we can have a very broad definition of artists. And then what we are also going to do in, in accompanying with this of, of giving preference to artists, we're going to target very, very heavily to the creative entrepreneur. And to the extent that we even have a grant that we are working with the Meta folks, Kim, do you want to explain that just a little bit?
Yeah, we discussed that a little bit before, but I think Francis students, they're currently the ones working on how you market this thing. Because it's their, it's that demographic that we want. It's the person who just graduates college with an art degree and has an idea and wants to grow a business. So they came down, I don't know how many of them, there was probably eight of them. We met in here, we gave them a tour, they got excited. They actually presented, if you saw those, the first logos, the Second Street Loft. They had six of different ones that they had already created.
You got to pick one for the application.
So, I mean, there's, there's opportunity there. The other thing, the qualifying factor is that the guys in Goshen did, is it was, they could even be a little bit more refined, and they said, okay, yeah, you qualify as an artist, but do you actually care about this community? Like, who is going to be that who built back into our community and is serious about what we're doing? So they used that as a So, they used that as a kind of a qualifying factor.
We can, we can do the same. We can structure, as long as we're compliant with fair housing, we don't discriminate against race, religion, blah, blah, you know, as long as we don't discriminate, we can put in factors such as that. We can put in factors of, are you employed? And simply give preference, additional preference points if you're employed, obviously. I mean, we don't, we don't wanna track people that are here just for a free ride.
But if you rent it, it's under lease like a apart, normal apartment?
Absolutely, absolutely. A minimum of twelve-month lease. I think we can go six months, we'll do a twelve-month, and it will be then.
I just, I'd love to see it happen, and then fill.
And if they, if by chance they take off and they're successful, they're not kicked out. I mean, they can stay there.
Yeah, there is no, there's no limiting duration of how long they stay there. They can stay there forever, but we hope they get very, very successful and they go knock on my door and say, "I wanna build a house at the golf course now because my business has taken off and I went."
You say you're gonna commit a kind of a broad description of artists. Who accepts that? Who decides if your description of artists is realistic or not?
So, step two, once we get the credits here, we need to then, as a community, define who's gonna be part of that tenant selection process. And I feel it needs to be the art advocacy folks from here in the community. And so, that, that's yet to be formed, but that's who I feel needs to be part of that. I'm not the greatest person looking at resumes and saying, "Well, I think you're an artist and you're not." But let's get people that are immersed in the, in the, you know, art advocacy world here, and they'll be part of that tenant selection criteria.
But if we're gonna be extremely selective, then we better go out and do our job of marketing, get a big enough pool that we can be selected with.
Right.
Is this something that I guess you would even maybe promote at the various universities in their art, arts schools, whatever?
They can't be students, right? They can't?
We can't, yeah, we cannot house full-time students. But ideally, we have to be capturing them as.
Graduates.
And so, walking out the door with the diploma.
Cause they're gonna be low-income, like we all work, we, that age, guys, well.
Okay.
So, the.
Same, same works for the, for the housing out on East Ridge?
Yes.
As we're talking about, same scenario?
It's all part of the same development, so, you know, we'll have some artists that come in and say, "Hey, I, I've already got a few folks in my family, and I need more space than just a one-bedroom up here in, on Second Street, I need a little more space." Or, you know, "It's my wife and I, but I wanna use that third bedroom for doing our, our art, and I need a bigger space, and it can't be accommodated here," so.
Good. So, those homes would be for, they have to be part of this, artists?
Yeah, we, we will have it.
Truffle acid treatment to artists and entrepreneurs.
And those homes would be, I guess, similar to the ones on East Ridge and Down Ridge right now?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, probably a little nicer, just because the agency requires so many amenities, and it'll probably be slightly nicer than those.
I think the homeowners out there would be happy to see those lots get filled, too. You know, I know when my daughter and son-in-law lived there, it was, you'd drive by and see those empty lots.
Well, and they got caught up in the, in the two thousand eight housing crush, really, that, that, you know, some of the finance firms, you know, they took them over and just let them go.
Yeah. And one thing I told folks, too, is that the fif, the twelve homes that will be built out there will be under our management, and, you know, as soon as I saw a house out of East Ridge, and I signed that deed over, and it's, it's up to them on how they.
Right.
How often they mow the grass, and if the pumpkin sit out the first day in the line.
And they'll, they'll have to go by the Decatur rules like anybody else. If they don't mow the grass, they give a notice.
But under my management, we won't even let, you know, code go out there and let the grass get, I mean, we, that'll be a lease violation. So, that, we actually have better control over how they are cared for than even what they're.
But they will still do the landscaping, the mowing, the, they'll do all that, that's not.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That, that will be part of their obligation. Now, like I did for our lease purchase project up in Fort Wayne, I made, I, I kept that for the first two years because we wanted to have fully established, we didn't wanna turn over yards that were spotty, and then they're out there complaining, "Well, I don't have grass growing, I'm not gonna mow it." So, we kinda took that over and actually paid for our company to do that, and now have turned it over this year, and so they have fully established yards.
So, these people that come in, you're gonna, you're gonna offer this lease to own, and what's the advantage to them to do that rather than to buy one of those homes out there that's empty?
So, there's a lot of folks that just don't have the creditworthiness to borrow funds for a hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar home. So, we'll be hitting that market of entrepreneurs, artists, that don't have that creditworthiness that can go out and rent at a very reasonable rate. And as long as they stay in that home, the opportunity for the person to buy the home is who is left at the end of the fifteen-year compliance period. So, you could have four or five families over that course of fifteen years occupy that home, but every year that passes, that deal gets, you're a little closer to the finish line, and the deal gets a little better.
Fifteen years.
It's fifteen years.
I guess what we're looking for, Kevin, we wanna make sure we're gonna be attracting desirable people.
Absolutely.
That's our concern, because we have enough undesire.
And I would, I would say that here in Decatur, we have a whole gamut of area median incomes. We have high income, we have low income, and we have all levels of housing. And I believe that there is certainly a contingency of housing currently here in town that is not adequate, and it is really in not good shape at all. I mean, there's certain parts of town that we know what parts of town those are, that it's a little saddening to think that people are subjected to have to live in those conditions, simply because they don't have the income and can afford to go out to the golf course or rent an apartment out of Bel Brook. So, I feel if we can bring a, a product that is respectable, of high quality, that will be managed very well, that has the scrutiny of IHCPDA and the investors oversight, that we'll, we'll be raising the bar for those people right now that live in our town that simply have to sadd, that can only afford to live in something that really isn't, isn't very nice. So, I mean, that, that's, that's what I think is, is the real benefit here, something like here in Decatur. And, and with this kind of unique project, we hope to be able to attract other people from other communities that are fitting the plan that we're putting together with the entrepreneurship and with, with the artists, so that we can bring them into this community, retain them, and hopefully be productive and, and add value while turned to the, to the economy here in Decatur.
I think a perfect example, this would've been, I don't remember his name now, that did all the, worked for Donkey for a while.
Gerard?
Gerard.
Mm-hmm.
That was a guy that, I mean, he would've certainly qualified, and he wanted to live downtown, he lived above Blackbird Boutique for a while, which would've been a great opportunity for him.
Yeah, young man just starting out.
I know what you mean, what's he doing now, you know?
He went to work for another company in Fort Wayne, Land Vision.
So, also, Kevin, this development, you're gonna pay property taxes on this, right?
We will. In fact, we just did an estimate that.
You got twelve new houses coming in that's gonna have property tax values.
Right. We've estimated about fourteen-thousand, five-hundred per year will be generated, will be property taxes that will be paid on this development. Yep.
Just looking at the numbers here, I mean, we, you look at the plan itself, we had allocated five-hundred-thousand dollars to do this, because we were on the impression that we were gonna buy the property as well as tear it down. This deal seems to be better than that one. The reason I asked about whether you had to have the green space or not, because if you have it, Paige, you, you know, if we were able to, to own it, could we get more parking space out of it ourselves? But you actually have a structure in there that's for the retention, the detention.
Right, yeah.
After five years, they're, they're gonna forget all about this project. We do what we want, nobody's gonna come and check on it, so.
I agree with you, John.
My theory is, on this project, isn't this street here supposed to be the pathway, the?
Madison Street, yes.
Where you're gonna put all the bricks and stuff?
Yeah.
If he, this is all private property then, right?
It would be, correct.
So, if you're gonna try to entertain people on this, I mean, when the city was gonna buy this lot, this is public property, public people want what they want. And if that's you, we give it to you, then that makes that all private property, and that leaves you, you have a street with no space to go anywhere.
How about this? Cause that's a really good point, Tyler.
I mean, what I'm saying, because I, I don't know, I guess I'm kinda a little waiting and bugging here, but you're giving away all this space to private.
How about instead of, again, today I just pulled out a highlighter and carved off an appropriate, about thirty percent. How about instead of it being out here in the corner, we have this thirty percent come off of Madison, and I can flip this green space over here more behind these buildings? So, that-a-way, you've got more, what I'll call, public, open space to spill out onto that.
So, you're saying the park that this would be the city's, anyone can park there?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of this being misconfigured.
The lot was, okay.
We, we would, we would structure the parking kind of along here, so this could all spill out, and this could be utilized for public events and things, and I can shift the green space over behind and tuck it in.
That's a good idea.
Which is probably better, you know, if this is for the lot, to people, it's probably better to have.
I promised you guys you'd be out in fifteen minutes.
Wouldn't they be accessing public key down?
So, so, right here is the.
By horns, right?
Yeah.
I got my bear in, okay.
I think the alleyway is probably right here. So, yeah, I mean, this would just be applicable, this here, we could pull out.
I should tell you, Kevin, I, I did contact the real estate guy, Mr. Pike, and let him know that there's a serious issue on the backside of their building by the alley. There's a big hole there. I don't know who knocked that hole in, but.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
On the Schaefer Building?
Go down the alley and there's.
You're gonna.
About this far up the ground, and there's a big.
I don't know, homeless people are crawling in there. I don't, I don't know what's going on there. I told him that it's a safety issue for the city.
Yeah.
Doesn't increase the value any, does it?
No. The only last question I would have is, is the one house on Elm Street?
Yeah.
What, do you just remodel that home?
Yeah.
Or you turn it down for a new?
No, we're.
Just remodel that?
Remodeling, yeah.
They actually are required to remodel.
That, this is the house that Kevin said.
The point that we're trying to get, yeah.
That's where if we had. People died in that fire.
Where is it on Elm Street?
On Elm, it's just to the west of Line Street, about three houses on the north side of the road, almost right across from John's little shop there where the, not quite that till the garage is.
Oh, yeah, okay, I know where we're at.
So, um.
Okay, that's a good question, Tyler.
And I got, I'll go back to the point that Kevin talked about, you know, do you want to end up owning the property after thirty years or not? That would be the issue, and it doesn't have to be decided now, it's something that could be worked out later if and when we get to a point where the project is awarded funding. So, I don't know how you feel about that.
I think there's so much still to be determined on First Street that, I don't know that that's even all that relevant.
We, we can enter an agreement later with Kevin on that.
Yeah.
We don't have to do that tonight.
No, it's not something you have to decide tonight, but that may be something that you think about. I, I don't know if, you know, from a, a public perception point of view, if ultimately the city ends up, the owner of the property, is that more acceptable to the general public, or does it matter? And that's something you guys need to decide.
Kevin, so, bottom line is, we have to write a letter supporting your application, and our donation of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand.
Correct.
Which is broken down as, as you have here, net contribution by the city, ninety-eight-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars.
So, yeah, I, I'm saying that with, with what I'm agreeing to provide back to the city, those are tangible values that, you know, in the eyes of commissioners.
And I, and I will share with you that I've had numerous conversations and emails with Tom Pittman of Barnes and Thornburg, because in order for the city to do this, we're probably gonna have to run this through the redevelopment commission. And what will happen is, because the city doesn't have the ability to just write a check to Kevin, okay? If we were the owner, then we could do it ourselves. It was our property, we could spend our money on it as you directed. But because Kevin is the owner, we, we can't just hand him a check. But the redevelopment commission can. The problem is that the redevelopment commission doesn't have any money. So, what the redevelopment commission is probably gonna have to do is go to a local bank and borrow the funds, and then use TIP revenues that are gonna be generated to pay back the loan, and it would probably be amortized over twenty-five years, because that's the maximum, and you can go out, and be honest with you, I think you wanna go the maximum because once you borrow money or bond, and you start paying that with TIP revenues, that starts the clock ticking for the redevelopment, or the TIP district from expiring. Under the statute, you know, you got twenty-five years from that date, so, once you start, and you don't wanna do it, so, so, for example, if you did it for a five-year amortization, your TIP district is gonna end in five years, okay? So, I don't know that you wanna do that. And, and obviously, the longer you go out, the less the revenue is gonna, that's gonna be required. In, in talking with Tom, he said that, cause my concern was, well, what if we don't have any TIP revenue? Then how do we pay back the loan? And I said, are there other sources of funds that could be used? And he, he pointed out that, for example, CEDF funds could be used for that purpose. So, I think what Tom, after talking with him, I drafted a, a letter, and I sent it out to Kevin, John, and Tom, just to review and mark up. Tom made some revisions, but basically, the letter would say that the city supports the tax credit housing project application that's being submitted by Kevin, and this letter's gonna be attached to that application, and that we're proposing to provide partial funding for the project, subject to complying with whatever statutory requirements we have to. And upon an award of funding for the project, the city would commit to two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, which is kind of what Kevin has laid out here. Taking, you know, after we've gone through the statutory procedures, the city's contribution would be in the form of facade grants, utility tap waiver fees, and cash contributions to cover costs of building, demolition, backfill, and site work. And the way Tom worded this, he said that the city would use its best efforts to borrow funds against TIP revenues, and when, when we talked to Umball previously, Umball anticipates in two thousand and sixteen that we're going to capture one-point-seven million of new assessed value, but that is before any adjustments from appeals to assessed value, which could bring that figure down. So, when I talked to Umball back in, I think it was May or June of this year, I asked them, you know, instead of one-point-seven million, what if we use a million? What if, what if we have seven-hundred-thousand of adjustments, it brings us down to, we're only gonna capture a million. What kind of revenue does that generate? And according to Umball, that would generate twenty-eight thousand, which we'd get half in June and half in December of next year. So, and, and hopefully, that's gonna grow over time, so that you, you, you know, if you're gonna borrow a couple hundred thousand dollars, because basically, some of this is gonna come in other forms, but, but let's say you borrow two-hundred-and-forty thousand. If you, if you borrow it at five percent interest, which probably what you're gonna pay or close to that for a commercial loan of twenty-five years, you know, your debt service is probably manageable with the TIP revenues that you have. If for some reason you don't have that full amount, then you'd have to fall back on the use of CEDF funds to cover the difference on an annual basis.
We just can't pay it out right with you.
Well, I think you could. I think you could, if you chose to do that.
And I don't think that decision has to be made tonight.
No.
We're just, we just, we just give a letter of support tonight, and then we can.
The only thing that I think Kevin.
You didn't know how you're gonna do it.
Kevin is wanting as firm a commitment as we can make, because under the guidelines for awarding of points, you know, it talks about, you know, having a firm commitment from the city. So, I can word this however you want. I can say that regardless of whether we have the ability to bond it, it will be funded to this level, either through borrowed funds or through CEDF funds. I mean, I could change the wording of that if you guys are comfortable in saying that.
Kevin, this whole thing, I mean, demolition cost is gonna be probably here in two thousand and sixteen? I mean, you'll get the award in February, March, is that?
Yeah, we would get notice, we receive the award in late February, so by March first, we'll know if it's going forward. And then, we would anticipate a six-to-eight-month due diligence indication to get the closing. So, it'll be late summer before we would close on the deal, before any funds get spent. So, it'll be this time next year probably, or maybe in August, September, would be the soonest that we would start on...
So, some of this cost is going to be in 16, some of it probably in 2017.
17, yeah.
Which adds up a little bit.
I think the only thing that we'll need to pay attention to is increase, we have to pull back on ceded, make sure we're not going to generate any...
Exactly. We always talk to us, why would it take out ceded? Well, for sure, we don't have any ceded left.
Well, keep in mind that our estimation is that we, that our property alone will be contributing about $14,500 into the TIP.
That's extra money.
So, in addition to what the conservative number that Kevin is quoting, when we get up and running, that also is going to be going.
We'll close back in.
And when you stretch that over 25 years, I mean, I don't have my computer here with me, but you run that through an amortization, it's not going to be hurting.
More than $200,000.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, okay. So, but reluctant, I'm reluctant to say TIP because the redevelopment commission has not met and had a chance to analyze any of this. Ron's here, and I think Max is a member of the redevelopment commission, and they, this person, they've heard this. They got an email mid-afternoon today saying, "Hey, there's a meeting, if you guys can attend it, I sure appreciate it, and thank you guys for showing up on such a short notice." I wouldn't even put the TIP in there. I mean, it just, Kevin gave me a sample letter.
My question is, do you have to identify the source of funding in the law?
No, no.
We just have to make the commitment?
He gave me a kind of...
Does it have to be a firm commitment? So, it can't be...
So, I can take all of that language out, if you want me to, and just say that we're committed to this figure.
Exactly. We'll have to tell them the TIP, we'll ceded, we just say, "We're committed to support it financially up to this amount."
And the only thing I would, I know Tom was pretty adamant about putting language in about, "Subject to compliance with statutory requirements," or something, which I don't think is an issue, because it's just, all he's saying is, "We've got to go through certain procedural steps in order to get the money to you."
Yeah.
So, that shouldn't be, they should understand that, I don't think that's...
Yeah, I think...
...watering down the commitment.
I would agree.
So...
And so, I guess what...
What are we asking for right now? To write the letter?
Well, what I would suggest is that the council, since this is spending money potentially at the city, I think a council needs to have an affirmative vote that it is committed to contributing 239,000 to the project, and then authorizing John to sign a letter, a donation letter or a commitment letter to that effect, for inclusion with the application that Kevin is submitting, IHCDNA.
So moved.
We have motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Thank you very much. I think we made a wise decision in supporting this project, and I think it's going to be something very favorable to Decatur. It's going to revitalize downtown. So, you need a letter and you need a copy of the resolution.
Correct. Yep. Okay. Thank you very much, I really appreciate this special meeting call just for this project here, and, yeah, we will...
We didn't even need you tonight, did we? Will you write up that letter? I'm going to give you a copy of a sample letter that Kevin...
That's fine.
And you can adjust accordingly.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I sent you earlier, this is what Tom, I marked down.
Yeah, I seen that.
So, I made the changes, that's...
I'm trying to sign a blank...
Huh?
I'm trying to sign a blank...
Kevin, thank you for all the work you put in, and wanting to do a project in Decatur, and wanting to do a project in Decatur.
I told John that a hundred times, I was thrilled to have the opportunity and do this project all over, so this is...
This is due Monday, November 2nd.
Yeah.
And Kevin's got two other projects due Monday, so he's got, he's got a lot of work to do between now and...
While you're here, Kevin, while you're here, Cam, did you guys talk at all about the pieces that went out to the agencies and whatever? Was there a cover letter explaining that a little bit more than...
Support letters, Kevin, from different agencies in Decatur that, North Adams Arts Council, for example, and...
I had two of them come to me and say that they didn't understand it, there wasn't a letter explaining it, a cover letter as such.
And I apologize for the miscommunication. All those servicing agreements, again, on a secure point, points for being able to go show commitment of servicing agencies in the community, simply to show that here's the service we provide, and we're willing to provide this service to your residents. Not asking for any special preferential treatment or anything above and beyond, that's really all those servicing agreements are there in the community agency. Michelle, what's available here in town, and to make sure that, because what they don't want to have happen is how the community go up, and all these great servicing agencies are all around, and they go, "Well, what's this project? Who are they working with?" So, you go up front and you secure all those letters that say they're willing to deliver those services.
Did the majority of them support it?
Yes, yeah, I think we've had a good response.
I use North Adams Arts Council as an example. All that is saying is, you continue to do what you're doing, but you do it down here, you know, in the arts part, you know, you display art there.
Yeah, we would love to give them the opportunity to obviously do it, you know, here in this space as well.
Both of them approached me, but they were just concerned about the level of the quality of person that was going to be there, and that it wasn't going to, what if this doesn't work, is it going to turn into schedule for Section 8 housing? And that was, that was the big concern.
People immediately when they see subsidized housing, they go to Section 8. This is Section 42, not Section 8.
But I think it's important, IRS.
Two different things.
Yeah, I think it's important that we, I mean, are there risks involved? We don't do it correctly, I mean, if we don't market and get the right people of what, you know, the demographic that we're after, you're going to be under pressure from the, from the investors to get these things filled, right? So, we have to do our part as a community.
I agree.
To go after this and to do the marketing piece, that's why we got, you know, St. Francis involved, but, I mean, and it's not just that, it's not just getting in there, right? It's engaging them, and getting these arts initiatives up and off the ground, and getting Arts Council going, so that there's excitement in their energy and they want to be a part of this. Yeah, so, I think there's work to do.
Yeah, I got one, so if you want.
And the more we can get, you know, like, accelerate, business accelerate, you know, getting that off the ground even now, so that-a-way, when this comes online, you can set the track record that, hey, we've already got three cohorts that have went through, and here's the kind of, you know, successes we've had, and, right?
I look at Greg Mendes, and how enthusiastic he is, and what a, really what a great ambassador he is in the artistic world and even outside of, you know, the community. He goes around a lot of places, and he promotes us, he talks about us, you know, and he does it with his peers. So, if you can get people here, if you get them engaged, if you get them excited about being involved, you just multiply that beneficial impact, and I think that's really one of the benefits that we'll see out of this.
Any comments from the floor here? You guys have patiently sat here for an hour and listened to what's going on, so... Anything else? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We'll get the letter to you tomorrow, okay? And give it to you. You guys want a journal or somebody? Make a motion for a journal?
Second.
Most effective, a journal, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motions carried. Thank you, guys.